If you work out Ms. Kenny, we'll be going.
I've thought about that. He needs protection, I might have to go with him.
If you do it right, it's good. I don't think I've got it right. I will, uh...
Good evening. We'll call the Burlington City Council April 2nd, 2013 meeting to order. Like to welcome you here tonight and hopefully you will return. Also like to ask if you would silence your electronic devices at this time. Calling Councilmember Bob Ward for night's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. As we assemble to do the business of the citizens of our city, we ask that we be given wisdom, insight, and understanding so that our efforts might further the interests not only of our citizens but all people. And we ask that all who are gathered here tonight will be open-minded and fair and accord each other with respect when we have sincere differences of opinion. And we ask that all of our deliberations and decisions be guided by the high standards of ethics and by the laws of our city, state, and country. We ask these things for the well-being of our citizens and all people. Amen.
This time we recognize Ms. Casey Robertson, Downtown Farmer's Market. Welcome, Ms. Robertson.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me, council members. It's so good to be here. And forgive me, I'm gonna read a little bit of what I wrote. But I am just very grateful to have this time to speak to you about something that is so important to me and I think so valuable for our community. My name is Casey Robertson. I've been serving as the market manager for the downtown Burlington Farmer's Market since last September. What I'm about to say may sound like a love story, and that is because in a way it is. It comes from my heart and for my care for our community and for a vision of what I think this community can be. I'm offering you my voice and my perspective, which is one of just many. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of Burlington's Downtown Farmer's Market, but also for farmers' markets everywhere. Farmers and artisans that are caring for the earth and for their community. I'm also here to challenge each of us to make a serious pledge. A pledge to reconnect with our own bodies, with the food we give to our bodies, with the land from which this food comes, and with the people, the human beings, the amazing human beings that are fulfilling their calling to be stewards of the earth. Our farmers and artisans who are the ones whose love and efforts bring forth the bounty that sustains us. I was so excited when last year I saw for the first time the Farmer's Market signs and that our downtown was going to have a real Farmer's Market with real farmers and real craftspeople offering their real food and creations, all of which are grown here in our own backyard. Nothing shipped from California, nothing made in China. Our market is what is called, in Farmer's Market lingo, a producers-only market, which means that everything that's offered at the market was made and grown and created by the folks that are there selling it. Our family of farmers and artisans are an amazing bunch of folks who care deeply for the land and for our community. Last spring and summer, I was working in the kitchen at Company Shops Market and would go out to the market on my 30-minute break that I had. It was nothing less than a magnificent feast for the senses. Just looking at the produce and the creations was like being in an art gallery. How many of you have been to the Farmer's Market, our downtown Farmer's Market? All right. Well, I encourage you, if you have not, all of you, to come and visit us. Our opening day is this coming Saturday for the season. This Farmer's Market is a life-giving wellspring in these days of fast food and folks being very isolated from each other and being disconnected from the land and people that sustain us. I got to know the farmers and loved hearing their stories of trial and triumph. I got to taste the food. You wanna hear about the food? Sun-gold tomatoes that make sense of being called a fruit. When I would buy a pint of them, my little nephew, if I didn't watch it, they'd be inhaled in two minutes, gone. Collard greens I took home and cooked that were melt-in-your-mouth tender and even a little sweet. Eggs with bright yellow yolks that you can actually taste. Corn on the cob that you could eat raw, it's so tender and juicy. I got to see people getting connected, getting educated, getting inspired, getting blessed, and giving blessing. I got to feel the love all around and in-between folks. Old folks and young folks, poor folks and rich folks, city folks and country folks. So last September, some of the farmers asked me if I would consider being the market's manager, and I told them what I lacked in marketing skills I would make up for in my passion. My passion for farmers farming and for reaching out to the community to try and inspire folks to come to Jesus about our broken food system and our disconnected community. I have felt called to be a mother to this Farmer's Market, to help it grow and get on its feet. I'm asking you to join me in supporting and empowering this amazing child that I truly believe is a big part of the heart of our community and a true living-giving tree that we have planted in our downtown. This market is a tree that is giving fruit to our local farmers, to our citizens, and to the other businesses downtown. I would like to ask you, ask the city, to become a sustaining partner of the Burlington Downtown Farmer's Market and to help fund its efforts to bring vital energy to downtown, to our downtown, and to our surrounding community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. For Ms. Robertson's question.
Sure, sure. And I'm glad to answer any questions. I'll be here through the rest of the meeting.
What is the starting and ending time?
We begin the first Saturday of April and end the last Saturday of October.
But the starting time of the...
Oh, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM. Yes, yes.
Well, you described it, you're gonna make me feel guilty about going to Zach's after this.
Well, maybe we can get Zach to buy some beef from our farmers for those hot dogs. Well, you gotta have a good hot dog to go with your collard greens, you know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the code of ethics, exposing conflicts of interest. This time we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward.
As a member of the council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and others that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next time's the approval of minutes, March 19th, 2013, City Council meeting.
We'll approve the minutes, March 19th, 2013.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Adoption of the agenda.
We adopt the agenda as written. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to set the date for advertising 2012 unpaid taxes for May 6, 2013. B, to set a date of public hearing for April 16, 2013, to receive public comments on the 2013-14 Community Development Program Annual Action Plan. C, to appoint Jimmy Stevens to the Burlington Fire Department Relief Fund Board for a two-year term.
Motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Under new business, item 2, City Council will consider adopting a resolution for the sale issuance of the City of Burlington General Obligation Bond, Series 2013, for the sole purpose of refinancing the 93 million general obligation bonds with an interest rate of 1.85% with Carter Bank and Trust. This time we recognize Finance Director Peggy Reese. Ms. Reese, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. At a previous council session, you approved the resolution to go to the LGC for approval of the issuance of these bonds, and I'm happy to report that they approved that this afternoon. So we will actually be issuing about 5.6 million in GO bonds for the refinancing. They will go for the same term as the previous 2006 street bonds till 2026, which is 13 more years. We're looking at approximately savings of 20,000 a year, so about 250,000 savings.
Questions or comments for Ms. Reese?
Move we adopt the resolution for sale issuance of the City of Burlington GO Bond, Series 2013, with Carter Bank and Trust.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Item number 3, City Council will consider approving an encroachment agreement with the City of Burlington and TW Telecom of North Carolina LP to place communication fiber in the public right-of-way on Turntown Street from 700 feet south of Stokes Street and Stokes Street from Turntown Street to 200 feet east. This time we recognize Mr. Lanning Ru. Welcome, Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pull this map up here. Okay, TW Telecom has requested to place an underground communication fiber to serve 1208 Turntown Street. This would require approximately 980 linear feet of installation in the right-of-way of Turntown and Stokes Street. TW Telecom has posted a 50,000 performance bond and supplied an adequate certificate of insurance to cover this work. In the encroachment agreement, the applicant has also agreed to indemnify the city from all damages and claims associated with the work and installation. And I would be glad to answer any questions you have and your consideration of approval of this encroachment agreement.
Questions for Mr. Ru.
I have one. Once we have our fiber system located and everything, we'll get a map of this as well.
Yes, this is one component of their system. As we receive these applications, we're keeping a file of that, and we hope to compile all that into one data sheet.
Any other comments, questions?
Move we approve the agreement between City of Burlington and TW Telecom to locate the communication fiber and right-of-way on Turntown and Stokes Street.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Mr. Ru. Brings us to the Senate comments.
Mayor, I've got one comment to make. We did have a successful visit to Raleigh to meet with our legislators down there with all of our present, Senator Gunn and Representatives Ross and Riddell. And really was enlightened on the cause and effects of the tax reform that they're working on. And it is some pretty serious ramifications to municipalities, not just ours but all across the state. And they're, you know, it pays diligence that we stay on top of those items and understand exactly how it's gonna affect us long-term. We just approved a bond sale today that could be in jeopardy, things like that, in the future if we don't have the revenue documented that's coming in. And these things just, this is as big or bigger than the Jordan Lake rules to municipalities with its ongoing effects. So it just pays that we mind our due diligence and stay up on that.
I'd like to join in the comments there. I really believe that this is something that we need to monitor on a meeting-by-meeting basis and ask staff to keep us apprised of anything that comes down the pike and run the numbers for us each and every... I know we have run the numbers so far, but with what we know, it's being thrown in the hopper down there. But I think this is something that we just have to, we have to take it upon ourselves to enlighten the folks in Burlington as to what sort of impact it's gonna have.
And I'd piggyback off both comments. Harold has discussed with me today in reference to our retreat is being held Monday, April 8, at the Carnaval Center, starts at 8:30 and goes to 12:30. Taking the first 30 minutes, asking our representation to come and meet with us and talk about some of these issues before it gets too far down the track. So if we could get Representative Riddell and Representative Ross and Senator Gunn here on Monday, I think we'd get a good head start on some of the issues that's forthcoming. And if no one has any objection to that, I would request that we agree and ask Mr. Owen to give them a call and see if we could have their presence for this 30 minutes worth of our retreat. Mr. Owens, if you'd do that. Also, a couple other comments. Our prayers and thoughts are with the Bill Davis family, and that also includes Beverly Smith as well. So Bill lost his wife and Beverly lost her mother last week. So our prayers and thoughts are with them. Again, I remind you, the council retreat will be Monday, April 8, at the Carnaval Center from 8:30 to 12:30. Also, we've continued our free bulk waste collection. It will run through the 26th of April. Harbor Day celebration tree giveaway will be on the 20th of April at Fairchild Park. $5 rugby clinic will be on the 13th from 9 to 11 at the adoption center. Just a couple of things. Also, I'd like to bring attention to the carousel paper here. Newspaper had a great article about the police chief and his retirement. So congratulations on that as well, chief. And also to Councilmember Ward, your opinion, article in here. Congratulations to both of you guys and also to you as well, ma'am. Any other comments from council?
That we do have a stream cleanup Saturday, May 6th, 6th of...
That is 20th, 13th, and the 20th. I did not. 8:00 to noon. It's Bowden Branch Stream.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a6 to discuss personnel issue.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Pose. Motion to go back into open session.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Move adjourn. Second.
You're good, I'm...
How are you? Good to see you. I wanted to bring forward she's going to...
Hi. Oh, I've heard about you.
She's with William in the afternoon and me in the morning, so she's got her projects...
Where are you? Where's going?[1550.12]